Roll call, please.
Okay. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Do we have any agenda changes or revisions?
No, we don't.
All right, we have requests for approval of the April fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen minutes.
We'll approve. Second.
Roll call.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speakers should keep in mind that they are being broadcast on live television. Have any takers? All right, final orders, resolutions, and written communications. The commission is about to vote on a final order approving a change of non-conforming use for property located at twenty twenty northeast twenty-second Street in the Ocean Lake neighborhood. The file number is M I S C two thousand and sixteen dash zero one. The applicants and property owners are Michael and Lila Bradley. The final order is a written record of the commission's decision that followed its public hearing deliberation and tentative oral decision made on April fifth, two thousand and sixteen. The planning commission's decision is to approve the request for change of non-conforming use with conditions. The final order reports the findings of the commission, explaining how the decision relates to the evaluation criteria. It includes the vote of each member and briefly states the basis for any minority vote. In this case, the tentative decision of the commission was unanimous. The vote on a final order is not meant to be a second vote on the subject of the hearing. If the final order accurate or reflects the findings of the majority and the decision, commissioners should approve the final order. Is there a motion to adopt final order two thousand and sixteen for the decision on file M I S C two thousand and sixteen dash oh one?
I motion we accept the final order on this line is two thousand and sixteen dash oh one.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
A notice of decision will be mailed to the applicant, property owners, and all others who participated in this hearing in person or in writing. This decision is appealable to the city council. It is now six oh four P M. This is a continuation of the public hearing for file Z O A two thousand and sixteen dash zero three. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Lincoln City zoning ordinance. These proposed amendments will amend the R M multiple-family residential zone. Amendments include new or clarified standards for pedestrian and street network requirements, building massing and orientation, recreation areas, bicycle parking, and density calculation. Planning Commission opened the public hearing on this matter on March first, two thousand and sixteen. The hearing remains open. The commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the planning commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before we take additional testimony tonight, staff will give an updated report.
Thank you. Well, it's been a while since we started this process, and we've been working on other things, so, but we have been gaining more input on this proposal. And I've promised to bring you back a report on what that is. So I'm doing that this evening and also talking to you about some changes that we probably would like to make in the ordinance, given the kinds of input we've been getting. So I would have to say right at the beginning, though, that I don't think this is ready for adoption. We have a lot more work to do on it. So just kind of relax a little bit. And I know, you know, we are in kind of a dilemma because I would like to make sure that we give the public adequate opportunity to respond to any revisions that we propose. On the other hand, I also am eager to hear what the planning commissioners are feeling about the ordinance and would like direction. So we'll have to see how it goes this evening. You're welcome to ask any questions, and then we'll need to decide whether to continue or to close the public hearing and have deliberations. So since the March first meeting, when we first talked about this, I have met with, well, and Richard have met with a couple developers, with an architect who's consulted with us on the standards, and also the Lincoln City Community Action Committee has put up a survey on their website, and they got twenty-nine responses. And a good number of those, I think possibly, I think sixty percent were tenants, multifamily tenants. So it was good information. It wasn't a scientific survey, so we can't say that we're representing all tenants when we share that result. But you did get a part of that in your packets. Because it's on a Survey Monkey, it's not easy, at least I haven't figured out how to, how to print all that off so that it looks like it does online. But I can get that for you, I can access it for you if you'd like to see more of that. So I could then, I did include that in your packet. I also included some design elements and a comparison of how we might take a typical Lincoln City multifamily building and dress it up a little bit or make it more accessible. And that's from our architect, Lawrence Kumar, Kumar Town Planning. They've, he has been consulting with us on our other projects here in town, and so we asked him to also give us some his thoughts on multifamily. We had a meeting with John Oxenholt and with Joe Barnes, and I did send them emails today asking if it was okay to share, you know, what we talked about. I didn't hear back from either one of them, so I kind of hesitate to do that, but you will see some indication of the kinds of comments we got based on some of our proposed revisions. Okay, the purpose still is to provide an environment suitable for higher-density urban residential uses and community services. Here's the background. We last amended the ordinance in two thousand and fourteen, and that was basically to clarify how we would calculate the high-density and low-density and mixed-density parcels. In the past two years, we've had eighty-four new multifamily units. There's, some of them are still under construction. We still have a high demand and low vacancy rates. I also will take a minute to say that we are in the process now of doing, updating a buildable lands inventory and a housing needs analysis. We have sent out an R F P, a request for proposals, which are due tomorrow, so we will be selecting a consultant in the next couple days, and then we will get the process underway. We have a technical advisory committee for this process, and we expect the first meeting will be at this month. We will finish the project by the end of the year, and then it will be ready for adoption. So again, we are moving right along on this. And I think, you know, it would be great to know the results of that when we consider revisions to the multifamily ordinance. And that's, again, sort of a dilemma, because I know there are some things that we'd be, we're rather eager to change. On the other hand, we would be better informed if we waited until we got the results, but that will be many more months. I already talked to you about what we did in the interim here, and I just want to remind you that the permitted uses remain the same and the conditional uses remain the same in our proposed amendments. The minimum lot area and density, in the original proposal we made, they both remained the same, except for the bonuses. But one thing that we suggest in the revision is that we might expand the hundred and fifty feet division, dividing line between high-density and low-density to two hundred. This is an idea that came up from the planning commission a couple years ago when we did the two thousand and fourteen revision. They wanted us to look at that. And one of the developers also mentioned that that would be helpful in terms of providing more multifamily at a lower cost. But I wanted to show you that it will impact neighborhoods, and I think here is a question where we might feel that we need to, maybe, I don't know whether we'd need to renotice this, but it only adds, I mean, it does visually, it doesn't seem to be a big deal. But, and most of this joining property then probably would still be multifamily. So it wouldn't necessarily impact single-family, but it could in some cases, and I haven't scrutinized the whole zoning map to see where that might occur. So anyway, I think we have to be careful about adding that or even expanding that to two hundred and fifty feet or, you know, but I think it's worth consideration. So keep that in mind. So last time I described the idea of density bonuses. Developers have said, especially in high-density, that they would like to have an opportunity to do more density. And we feel that, you know, maybe that's appropriate, but not, we don't want to encourage it in tsunami evacuation areas. We don't want to put more people at harms, in harm's way than normal development. So I described this last time, I won't get too much into that, but I will mention that the Community Action Committee, this is the group that did the survey, supported the higher quality, the recreation space and affordability, all three. So, you know, in some cases, maybe those aren't all consistent, but we're hoping to get the best we can out of all three of those. So we were talking about enhancements, and that we would calculate that based on how much the developers spent on, you know, percent of the total project cost, and we would give square foot reduction in the area requirement, based on that. We talked about improvements for coastal climates, and the same sort of thing. It would be based on the developer's cost, and they would get then a reduction in the area per unit. Here's just a picture to break up all the text. And then the other thing that we talked about is giving a bonus for affordability. So new affordable units, up to ten percent increase, would, we would allow that if they were all affordable. Now, one of the revisions that we talked about, one, some input that I got is we'd like the extra density, but we can't use a bonus because we can't, we can just barely fit in what you allow now because of the parking requirement and recreation area requirement and, you know, square footage that we need for the building. So it would be very helpful if we could increase the height at another story. I think that that might be appropriate, but only adjacent to commercial zoning and not adjacent to single-family. So I was, this is a suggestion that we might consider, raising the height in order to accommodate bonus units, not for, just on general grounds, but if there are bonus units can't be used unless the height is increased, and that we would limit that to not be within a hundred feet of single-family. So, yeah, I see some eyes widening there. Yeah. Okay, so we do have, let me say that we do allow forty-five foot in the commercials, in the general commercial zone. So, you know, this is not a new height for us. Setbacks remain the same, except we're proposing that we allow a front porch to encroach up to five feet into the required front yard setback, which is twenty feet, and that's pretty good-sized front yard compared to our single-family zones, which are five or seven and a half, depending on the height of the structure, the number of stories. The side and rear yard classification, oh, but another thing that I suggested in the most recent revisions is that we have a street yard setback. We don't talk about street yards as different from any other side yard in the current code. So.
Could you clarify that last statement?
Okay, the revision specifies street yard setback. A side yard could either be on a lot line between two buildings, two properties, or on a corner where you would have the front yard and then a street side yard. And, yes, so the street, the front yard is twenty feet and for.
Or an adjourned alley or something.
So, yeah, so the street side yard, I'd say in the revisions that it should be at least fifteen and not smaller than the other side or rear yard. So they are a function of the height of the building. It's fifteen feet, or five feet plus a half a foot for each foot, the building height is over fifteen. So it's kind of complicated, but it typically works out if they have a maximum of thirty-five feet, then you have a twenty-foot side yard. Do I have that right, or is that for commercial? Let me think about that. So fifteen, thirty-five, twenty, ten. It would be twenty-five. No, fifteen, fifteen. I'm sorry, okay. So the maximum you would get on a thirty-five-foot building would be a fifteen-foot side yard. So, okay. So this one basically says fifteen, I guess, either way. Side and rear yard classification, if more than one building height of the nearest principal building, and this is for clarification purposes, we've run into this problem where we talk about the, what the yard is, and it depends on which building, and we don't say that in the code. Parking spaces, this is the same that we have now, two per unit, elderly apartments, one per bedroom. We don't propose a change here, except the revision allows on-street parallel parking adjacent to the development count. And I hadn't specified that before. Deanna's just dying to say something here, so, yes. Location, not in required front yards, not between principal buildings and the street. We had two developers saying, you know, our topography is such that, you know, that could be really difficult in some situations. Our consulting architect pointed out that San Francisco does it quite well, and they also have hills there. But, so what I did is I put in the revision that we could allow an exception for extreme topography, and that would be at the discretion of the planning commission, whether they thought that was justified. Buffers, ten-foot landscape from the street, four foot from the alley, ten foot from use in residential zones, or I have suggested an option of an alternative four feet plus a wood fence, which would provide the buffer, but also some landscaping. So these are the same diagrams that I had before, showing what we're after on those. Parking on sites with more than one building, those are the same as we talked about last time, so I won't belabor those. This is what we'd like to avoid, is having a bunch of parking or garages sitting in the front yard and blocking the view of the residential units and also making them less accessible. Here is an alleyway where you've got your tuck-under parking, which is rare here because it's more expensive, but it is an option. And you could achieve, and you know, have the same result if this was an alley and you had parking, on surface parking, so. Recreation area, we did talk a lot about this with the developers, and, but we also got a lot of feedback that it was very important to the tenants. So one of the things that we did, that I did in the revisions is I first talked about those regulations that should apply to both high and low density. And that would be that the recreation area will not count if it's within thirty feet of garbage, that it needs to be on a slope no greater than one to twelve, which is about eight and a third percent, that it needs to be within the view of residences. And the minimum is two hundred and fifty, for the size, is two hundred and fifty square feet, no dimension, less than twenty square feet. This is old, and I think I need to take that out. Let me go on to, okay, I think that was an old slide, sorry. Thirty feet slope, smooth finished grading, and for walls of indoor recreation facilities, a minimum transparency. Okay, and then in the low-density residential areas, what we heard from developers is that for low-density, they have plenty of area to provide the adequate recreation without restricting their number of units they can provide. So in that case, then we're leaving the standard at two hundred and fifty square feet per unit. Minimum area is two hundred and fifty, and it should be square foot area with fifteen-foot minimum dimensions. I worked on this a little bit because our chairperson pointed out the mathematical problem with.
Conundrum.
Yes, conundrum. So, but then that the majority of the rec space should be in the larger area, at least twenty-foot minimum dimensions and four hundred square feet. So that, I think, works out, pencils out a little better. Again, within view of the windows of the residences it serves, private balconies and patios do not count for low-density as rec space. We want that, if they want to provide those, that's in addition. But in the high-density areas, now this is closer to commercial use, this is more of an urban-type environment, where we're not going to have as much land, we want the higher density, so we drop down the square footage to a hundred square feet per unit. And I did hear this from, especially one of the developers, that in the high-density, it's really difficult to try to make this work. So lower square footage per unit, and then the thirty-six minimum square feet, and six foot would be obviously for a deck. Balcony, decks, and patios would count in this scenario. Two hundred and fifty square foot minimum with fifteen-foot minimum dimension for any other areas that might be rooftop or surface courtyards, that kind of thing. I also threw in here the idea of fees in lieu of rec space in the, in these areas near commercial core areas. The thinking is that if we can see that there are other optional recreation, or other recreation options, that we could use the fees to improve those or expand those, rather than trying to get these individual developments to carve out a recreation space. Yes?
When you say high-density areas up there, are you talking about standard density plus bonuses, or?
No, I, well, I was actually referring to those within a hundred and fifty or two hundred feet of commercial, you know, but right now, a hundred and fifty feet is our high-density.
I was kind of wondering the proportion of, well, the actual size of a unit, the change in size of a unit with bonuses and so forth, proportional to the change in the size of that recreation area per unit. So you're going two and a half times smaller for a higher density. Are the units two and a half times smaller?
No, I don't think so, not necessarily. They would, they might be, they might be the same size, you know, I, we don't, it isn't tied to the size of the unit, it's, our thinking is that it is in a different kind of environment where tenants might not expect to have the same play area or recreation area that they would, or maybe they take advantage of the community recreation rather than for the individual development.
Thank you.
Okay, and so this is just to remind you that the R M zoning applies to R M zones, but also in the recreation, commercial recreational zones, the general commercial zones, and our professional campus zones, in our Taft Village Core. These all refer back to the R M for standards. They say, yes, you can develop multifamily according to the R M standards. So we have to keep that in mind.
So the red is commercial?
Red is commercial.
Brown is multifamily.
Multi, this is multifamily over here, yeah, and it's here on this map as well. The red is commercial, this is the recreation commercial, this red with the green stripes. We have Taft Village Core down here, the pink is professional campus, and I think Nell Scott is also in this, isn't it, Kate? Do you remember? I think they refer back to R M. So, so it really includes a lot more area than just the R M zone.
Is there a percentage of, what percentage of R M zoning might qualify for high-density?
I haven't calculated that, but that's something we could look at. In fact, that might be something when we do the buildable lands inventory, that probably is, is a piece of information that would come out of that. Good question. I need somewhere to write this. So with the access barrier, the only rewriting I did here is just to simplify it and clarify the meaning, because it was, seemed a little convoluted to me. Site development, pedestrian network, we had a number of standards, basically just to ensure that pedestrians can walk from one building to the other, walk from the buildings to the street, get to the transit schools and parks, have an ADA surface, the raised curb height, and the marked crosswalks are for, both for safety in terms of separation from the cars that would be crossing their paths or driving next to them, and stubs to future development, just to ensure continuity. So this is one of my Fargo examples, we want buildings closer to the street and more accessible and that add to the streetscape. Site development, this is another thing that we talked about last time, to connect public streets and street segments where a piece of property may, there may be two, two separated, they may be separating two segments of the same street. We want to make sure that the developer in that case works with the city to ensure connectivity and provide stubs to future development. Building orientation, we talked about one building, at least if, each building should have one facade that faces the street and one entrance in that facade. Again, a developer who is in the low-density area pointed out that, well, that, you know, he didn't see that as critical in his development, because on some summer streets, say West Devils Lake Road, it is not a place where there are a lot of buildings close up to the street, and he would expect that he would set his buildings back in the woods a little ways, rather than have them right at the street. And so this is a consideration that we could say that, and he said he doesn't mind the higher standards if they're visible from the street, but if they're, why do we need to require them if they're not? So this one says that the revision makes this apply only to buildings clearly visible from a street. And there we have to, I mean, it's basically a recognition that maybe all of our multifamily are not going to be lined up, you know, near the sidewalk, twenty feet from the sidewalk and part of a neighborhood, some of them may be more rural in their character.
This applies only to the facade facing the street, not any of the other farm factors, is that correct? This revision.
Yes, yes, yes. Did you have something, Commissioner? Did you have something, Commissioner?
Just thinking it through. So, the changes in the facade would be for the people driving by and not for the people who will be living there? That's what that suggests to me, I'm just curious if I'm-
Ah, oh, because, you know, I see what you're saying. Well, this is orientation, the other thing still, you know, the character of the building, you know, and some of the quality of design and some of the details still would apply to everything, so it could be a nice-looking building, it just wouldn't necessarily be having a door face, face the street. So, I don't know if that totally gets at what the developer was asking, but I thought that seemed like maybe something worth considering. Shall we, do you have something?
I'm gonna wait until you have your-
Okay. Okay. So, multiple buildings, we haven't added anything here, but where we say interior buildings must have a main entrance visible from private streets or parking, our architect also suggested we add courtyard, because there are some very nice developments where front yards go out into a courtyard as opposed to parking lot or a street. And there's another Fargo picture. And this is, this is showing, you know, the back of the building, and this is clearly visible from the street, so, you know, this is, this is maybe what we'd like to avoid. Building articulation, I talked about some of these simple details on construction. The developers we talked to did not really spend too much time focusing on that, they were, I would say, both of them were more concerned generally with the building orientation and the density, that seemed to be their, their prime interests. So, you know, in fact, one of them said, yeah, well, you know, it's not going to be a deal breaker if you require windows in the ends of the buildings, you know, or, you know, these, I mean, these things I think were below their radar, basically. So, we did talk with our architect about having, you know, whether we should have, how we should treat longer buildings, whether we should limit the length of the buildings or how you break up that long expanse that isn't in character with the smaller buildings we typically have in town. He suggests that at least every eighty-feet building must, well, he didn't suggest the number of feet, but he suggested that every so often you have a significant break in the roof line. And I do have a picture here, for instance, okay, and we'll have to go back to this one, but, or maybe I'll just talk about it first. And then at least one exterior pedestrian front door, and he says, you know, make sure it's not a patio-style door, it's a real front door. So, revision adds that, I just suggested a new one, is that we add an entryway accessible from both sides of the building every fifty feet, this was also from the architect. And that's great for accessibility, I hadn't really thought about that, but if you have a building that is, say, a hundred feet long, it's nice to be able to go from one side of the building to the other, especially if it's backing onto the street, or you want to get from the street and you also want to be able to get out to the parking lot to your car. So, I think that's a very smart idea. We had already said no facades over a hundred feet, and we had already said that we needed at least fifteen percent windows in each wall. So, here is, here are some of the sketches that the architect did for us. What I would like to do next is, he suggested somebody locally who could give us some cost estimates on what some of these, on how these things would change, change the overall cost of the development. This is a typical new apartment building. This is his idea of possibly having, you know, breaking that up into smaller buildings, that's option one. And parking lot side would have the balconies and the door out to the parking lot, but then on the street side you'd also have a door, and it would just line up with the other door, so it'd be a path straight through the building that would allow the tenants to get out to the street, acknowledging that people do, are starting to walk in Lincoln City, actually. So, building articulation, again, here is the existing proposed long, this would be the backside of the building, and he is showing the significant break, and he would line it up with this, in this case, see, these are the stairwells, but I think apartments do encroach into the back because it doesn't go all the way through, but if you could make that go all the way through and have a significant break in your roof line, then it adds a significant amount of character to the development, and it also increases that accessibility vastly. So, and then he's showing a building end here, and I've got a comparison of that later on. Here again, it's just the existing, you know, the kind of development we might have, and then what we could do to significantly dress it up. And again, here, significant changes in roof style and the break. The architect does not like changes in roof style, just for no good reason, like, you know, when people put on dormers without windows, or put on a gable where it isn't really serving any function on the building. He thinks simple, simple boxes are best, he says, but you can really change the appearance with these, some of these. Yes. But he also says, design-wise, you know, it's, you don't want to elaborate on them just for the sake of ornamentation, but you want the function to, it to be more functional, and then that also, you know, addresses the appearance. So, and then here are the ends, blank ends versus ends with windows. And he's also has some techniques that I put in there as recommendations that are interesting, like this ties the windows together, and it elongates this building, and in a couple different ways. And he is very, he likes to emphasize vertical lines, and I think that is because, especially when you get to a really long horizontal building, it helps to have those, those vertical lines to kind of break it up, so you don't look like you're in a warehouse. Okay, another pretty picture. One of the things they said, they criticized my pictures last time, because they said, here in Lincoln City, all of the apartments open to the street, they don't, they don't have an interior hallway as a hotel would, you know, where you go in and then you take the elevator up, or you walk up the interior stairs. Both of them felt that it's what works here, and I don't know whether it's because of the market, or the cost factor, or what, is to have an individual entrance for each unit, and then you, for the upper levels, you have to walk up a stairwell. And then, and so, like, the most recent example we have, we had three and three, and then beside each other, and then on each end you have a stairwell going up. So, everybody has access from those stairwells, but it's not an interior access. So, anyway, I took out all those, and so these all have entrances that go out onto the street. This was from our original proposal, that we need to have roofs over our stairways and corridors, even if they're on the outside of the building. Our architect said, you know, a durable, a base, a different base is not important except on maybe a masonry building, or if it's a masonry base, or something like that. He thought it was fine not to have a base, so I thought, okay, why, why require something that, that an architect doesn't think is important? So, and, and he's not the only architect, of course, so, you know, we may want to consult with somebody else before we're done, just to make sure that we get a balanced approach here. Consistent orientation of windows, I think, is important regardless of whether they're vertical or not, but I thought if the building is over fifty feet in length, I think that's where maybe we want, need some of those vertical lines. Building specifications, appropriate exterior materials, and I'm not sure whether I said that before in the code, but I think this is fine, and these are choices that our contractors make. Typically, the hardy plank is very popular, and of course cedar is very popular here. So, here are the design recommendations that I also already mentioned, avoid dormers that don't add windows, avoid unnecessary changes in roof lines, spaced columns supporting balconies closely to emphasize vertical proportions, align horizontal bands at window sills, vertically group two or more stories, and you saw that in the end units there, I pointed that out. And we also talked last time about mechanical equipment, bicycle parking required, and dog waste requiring a plan and compliance. The bicycle parking, maybe you caught the last planning, or the last council meeting where we were talking about the transportation system plan amendments, and the bicycle parking kind of ran into a snag there. I think the council, some of the council were expressing the same concerns about what's too much, what's unreasonable. And I think, you know, at least one member felt that maybe it wasn't the responsibility of the private property owner to provide that, that it should be a city function. So, we're taking a look at some of those things, and we'll be doing more work on the transportation system plan as well. So, with that, I'm just going to reiterate here that we do have more to do, if it isn't obvious, and we need to get more input. We want to finalize our proposal, make sure that notice covers revisions that we're talking about, because we did send out a notice to everybody in town saying, okay, we're going to be revising this, and these are the kinds of things we're going to be looking at. So, in the end, when we figure out what it is we want, we have to make sure that we have given proper notice, so anyone who might be concerned about those changes has an opportunity to come forward. Then, you know, after the staff does, does all that work, then I would think that you would want to close the public hearing. You may want to, well, as I said before, you know, when you close a public hearing is up to you, certainly, but it's either, we want to make sure that as long as we're bringing forward revisions, that the public has a chance to consider them and speak to them, yet, you know, it limits your opportunity for deliberation. So, the city manager was suggesting that for the transportation system plan improvements at the council, that they have a workshop-type meeting. They have already closed their public hearing, though, so, but that would give, maybe give an opportunity for you to, for us to kind of do more of this work together. So, anyway, I, you know, so I probably totally confused you, but, or, you know, the other option is to wait for the buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis. So, that's my offering this evening.
I think now would be a time for some questions, I'm a little confused.
I was just curious, Deborah, about the fire safety, with the, you know, driving into apartment buildings that might have a limitation, I don't know how far our ladder truck can reach up, but I'm assuming you have reviewed this with the fire chief?
Not yet, but that's something that we always do with every site plan that comes in, and we certainly will, will touch base with the fire chief and the police chief before we go ahead with the final proposal, but it's a good point.
About the heights, what is the height limit for commercial?
The height limit for commercial is forty-five feet in the general commercial zone, and I believe in the recreation commercial zone, is that right Kate?
Uh huh.
She's like a human code book over there, so that's, that's really nice to have.
Did I hear forty-five feet in both?
Forty-five feet, yes. So, that's why, you know, I'm thinking if it's adjacent to commercial, if it's not too close to single-family residential, that, you know, that's why I thought, well, maybe that is something that we could do for developers to allow increased density and allow them to use the bonuses that we're offering.
I'd like to throw in, forty-five feet, that sightline is taken into consideration for the neighborhood, because if it's impacting sightline for non-commercial units, it's gotta be a consideration.
Yes, I think that's right, and that's when I was mentioning earlier, that I want to make sure that people have an opportunity to comment and are aware of any proposal like that. The developers, I can say, you know, the one in particular really liked that idea, and so that's the only way they could use the bonuses, and the only way that they could see that they could really provide increased density, when we're still requiring certain size yards, and, and if we require, you know, recreation space and that kind of thing. So, yes.
I know that in my neck of the woods, my word, a lot of the people think the thirty-five limit on residences is too much, and I'm not sure how they would take forty-five on here, but I just want to clarify, it would be limited just to high-density multifamily, it would not-
Right. And, and does not apply if the buildings are within a hundred feet of a single-family residential zone, so it would afford some protection, but it still might block some view. I don't know if there's multifamily in your neighborhood, in the Nell Scott area, you might be able to-
No, there is east of one oh one.
We can go up to our map here, maybe.
Seven oh one by the hotel, by the beach access.
Okay, so, let's see here, there's ten, I'm guessing I think, so, anyway, not, not much there, but, you know, it may, I mean, may be a concern in other neighborhoods, not just yours, but, right.
Well, we've faced circumstances where a particular construction became egregious because it accidentally went a few inches over, we have a house in our neighborhood that's a pretty blatant thumb up your nose, and it's, it's not even a foot over height. I'm concerned, I mean, it's almost a hundred feet to that wall back there, forty-five feet would be up there somewhere. If there's anything that would put one of those structures between a residential and some precious view, I think it would be pretty contentious.
Uh huh.
I think we'd hear a lot about it at the planning commission meetings.
There might be a place for it, say, east of one oh one, up against the hillside, that's not going to have any chance of blocking anybody's view, but anything west of one oh one, I think, could be very problematic, yeah.
I was wondering, just on the same mode, is, could we zone an area that would be, you know, and I'm not trying to build a slum, but could we zone an area that we would give real outrageous benefits to someone who wants to put in affordable housing, to get the affordable housing in? Because, you know, what I'm seeing here is things that are going to cost more money. It's gonna, you know, every restriction costs more money, everything you do, it costs more money, more spaces, more money. And, and this is just real quick, if a person's making eleven dollars an hour a witch, Chinook Winds finally raised their bottom to eleven dollars an hour, forty percent of their income is seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. That is not going to get you anything in the way of housing in Lincoln City. And so, fulfilling the need for workforce housing, we're not addressing that in this. So, I guess what I'm questioning is there's some way that we could take a chunk of Cascade Head, you know, we have lands that are in our possession right now, and carve out something and make a deal to put some housing in, you know, you know, with Barnes or Oskenholm, I'm not, you know, I saw that they responded to us, you know, because we need to, we need to get the motor running, and, and, and I mean, running, because we have a high level of people that, that would love to work here and live here, but have to choose one or the other, because they can't do both. And, and so, something, you know, different, you know, like a zone area or something, is that something that, I'm crossing the line on, Richard, you know, to build a zoned area just so that we could in fact get a developer interested? You know, to build a zoned area just so that we could in fact get a developer interested?
In terms of what this legislative hearing is about, yeah, you're straying from what this is advertised for. I mean, if you're looking for incentives for, and this ordinance is about incentives to provide multifamily development and working with the development community to facilitate more and better, arguably better, development with density bonuses. But the, the city does own property, as you noted, and the city can facilitate affordable workforce housing opportunities by using its own property, but that's not the subject of this hearing, so.
Because I was just, I hear the term affordable and I'm guessing affordable isn't really affordable if you're making eleven dollars an hour, so.
What I'm trying to do with this ordinance is figure out a way that we can get both the amenities that people want and offset the cost of providing those by allowing more density. So it's, it's a tough thing to try to get the right balance there and to make it actually work for, financially.
I guess the question is, what is affordable? What is affordable?
Well, we need, the city needs to define that.
Well, if we're going to give them a break for affordable, what is affordable?
Exactly. Well, we have to define that. And Richard started working on that even before we proposed this ordinance. But we need to, I think, probably have the city council give us a direction on what that is or a decision on what that is. I'm hoping again, you know, that this, I have, I have great hopes for this new study we're doing. I think everybody's been waiting for it. And it's overdue, given our housing situation right now. So again, I think that might be useful in defining what's affordable to the people who live here and the people we would like to have come here to take jobs and people who retire here.
I think it's important because we probably all have different definitions of what that means and different expectations of it. And if there's one measure that we can use and look to see whether that fits the definition or that doesn't, or we're moving towards affordability or we're not, that would really, really help, yeah.
I love the opportunity to go to different restaurants all the time. People that work there have to be able to afford to live somewhere near here or they close.
Absolutely.
I want them to be all open and viable and so making this work somehow is my goal.
Right.
I have a, I have an issue with the way civilizations change.
Well, let's see if we can take care of that for you.
Well, a part of it is the city's position on, on commercial standards for large VRDs. I, I kind of believe that someday in the future, our economy's going to become wonderful. Or VRDs will become hotels, or they might become rooming houses. Rooming houses, is that the right word? So the high quality of the building standard for a large VRD today might someday turn into be really appropriate for a multifamily house of some description. I'd really like to see if we're going to build this density that we also take in mind that the economy changes. Things either get better or they get worse. And if they get better, we might have constructed a whole bunch of pretty cheap boxhouses somewhere that now we have to tear down to make them fit.
The market.
The market, the current market. So the motion of our civilization needs to at least be a part of our considerations here. The, the form factors, the bonus form factors, I think, kind of lend towards it looking Kind of as an aside, can you share the feedback from your inputs on the bonus aspect of the form factors?
From the developers or from the?
From whoever you, yeah, you got the feedback from. I assume the developers would be most interested in.
Well, I kind of covered this yet to some extent, but they, the, one developer said, you know, I can't use those because I, with the thirty-five foot height limit, the yard requirements, the recreation area requirements, I run out of land before, I mean, it is the more units you add, then the more space you need and, and my property is limited. And so I, I run out of room before I can use the number of units. So that's why I, and, and he had suggested maybe increasing the height. And that's why I put that in there so that we could, you know, kind of get a sense of where we're at there and whether that even is a possibility.
Well, I think, well, I think at least, I, I think we heard that if the height isn't going to put a hotel in front of a residence, between a residence and a beach view or something like that, that it would be acceptable. I was raised in San Diego, the downtown Banker Hill and Twentieth and Twenty-first Street, those things are seven or eight stories tall.
Right.
Some of them look really nice. And they, and beating a dead horse there, the, the economy of that area there has changed from boom to bust to boom to bust four or five times since those things were built. Some of them weathered it pretty well.
Yeah, okay. Well, and, and in addition to the question about the bonuses, for instance, now, right now, our practice has been to count balconies and patios as recreation area. So with this change, we were proposing not to count them, but then to incentivize them with bonuses. So our newest apartment buildings have balconies and patios.
Which I've heard that they can't even grill on.
Well, I don't think that's allowed for fire reasons, am I right? I think maybe that's a fire.
It's a recreational space that you could just look at it.
But no, yeah, so, yeah, how you use them, how you regulate them is another question. But I know that I've talked to people who are, well, especially one person in particular who is a smoker and really like to be able to step out their door onto, you know, to the outside rather than going down the floor and, you know, two stories and out. I'm not advocating smoking, but there are other reasons why people might like to go directly to the outdoors.
Hang your underwear on the rail.
Right. That was, yeah, that was a criticism about somebody who didn't want multifamily in their, in their neighborhood a few years ago. Maybe you remember that.
Another reason would be that it would provide a larger window space or glass space.
And character to the facade. I think that's what we're looking for instead of, instead of the projects.
I do have a couple of things that I was thinking about and one of them is you were right about the parking with the city having such an issue with parking that the consideration of moving some of the parking from the apartments, the buildings, onto the on-street parking just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if they have visitors, where are they going to park? They're going to park on street to come and visit or whatever, but the people who live there, that just, that just seems like a big conflict to me for where the city is going.
One of the nice things about having on-street parking is it does actually provide a buffer from the travel lanes to the sidewalk or, and to the buildings. And it also narrows the street, the track, you know, the, the appearance of the wider street is narrowed when you park on one side or both sides, which actually slows cars down. They have to slow down to be careful and to stay in their, their lane instead of going all over the place. So that is the benefit of on-street parking. Whether or not we, we want to count that and let them reduce their on-street parking is another question.
That, that's my point, exactly. I, you know, the on-street parking is going to be used and it does provide all those things that you just mentioned. But where I was having trouble with it is using it as a bonus or incentive to reduce something else. But that's.
The developer of our most recent apartments, I asked whether the parking standards seemed to be about right and he thought it was. He did take some, he did reduce his requirement by having some of his units be senior. And maybe that's not why he did that, but, but in effect, because he labeled some of his units as senior units, at one-bedroom senior units, they got by with one parking space for that unit rather than the two. That's something else that, you know, is possible to, is maybe something we should look at, is whether we should adjust the parking so that it's not two for all units regardless of the size of the unit. In some communities, they have different parking requirements for inefficiency, a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three or more bedrooms. We've talked about that a little bit.
If you label an apartment elderly, does that also come with things like grab bars and other safety standards for elderly people?
Well, in, I'm looking at it from a zoning, zoning perspective and we don't get into that ourselves.
I was actually wondering if that was in, if that was a part of the bonus consideration?
Yeah, well, I hadn't thought about that. I hadn't written anything in specifically for seniors in, in the bonuses.
Probably going in a different direction here, Deborah. I thought it was curious, the letter from Joe Barnes. He gets some very scowled comments in there. One that kind of grabbed my attention was the cost of permitting for here and Lincoln City versus other areas around the county.
I don't have any personal knowledge of that. Richard, when's the last time we did a comparison of our fees as opposed to others in the state?
As far as like application fees and that kind of thing, it was probably less than, less than two years ago, probably even a year ago. Our building permit fees, if we're thinking about that.
No, I'm just thinking of the comments that Joe wrote that if he was to build the same complex up in Warrenton that he would build down here, his fees in Warrenton were twenty thousand dollars, his fees down here would be a hundred and twenty.
That's, that's talking about the system development charges. And, and, you know, we just reduced our system development charges for water and sewer and we'll be looking at the Parks SDC's pretty soon, as soon as the Parks Master Plan is finished. I think that there have been some looks at that. Ours, ours are pretty much in the middle. There are, obviously there are places that are lower, there are places that are a lot higher. Ours, ours are pretty much middle of the road.
I think, I think he made a good point when he said that lower-income people with the higher fees would have a harder time paying the rent on some of the units. And we're trying to encourage our builders to design things and construct things for our lower-income population.
One thing I think you need to look at when you think about system development charges is what the local market is. And developers don't set their rents based on, they set their rents largely based on market. They figure out going in whether the property is going to pencil out or not, whether development is worth doing, whether they can get the rents they need to cover their costs. I'm not certain that, like if we eliminated system development charges, that all of a sudden we would have this huge number of affordable units. What we would have is potentially is some lower rents, but also more profit.
And less money to spend on streets.
Pardon me?
And less money to spend on streets and utilities and parks.
I mean, it's not, it's not simple one, one thing or another, but it's, it's not, you know, if we lower our system development charges, all of our, all of our problems will be solved. It helps solve problems, but it's, I don't think it's the be-all and end-all by any stretch of the imagination. Land cost is, is a huge thing. That's why increasing the density can help solve problems. It reduces the cost per unit.
Yes, that's one of my main concerns with the proposed changes, MF changes. How can we be assured that they will result in affordable housing? And is, we can't, yeah. I think earlier when you mentioned it will help get us the amenities we want, that people find attractive, but I'm not sure it will result from affordable housing. So I would like to see the city really develop a default definition for what is affordable housing and maybe involve the public in that process. So the community agrees on what constitutes affordable housing and then proceed from there, yeah.
Is this an appropriate place to actually consider something like rent control? I mean, in, in this ordinance?
Well, I think we'd probably want to start with a new ordinance, wouldn't you say, Richard? That might be getting outside the scope of what we've advertised.
We send.
Well, I think so.
We start out by sending a notice, a DLCD, and say, here's the ordinance we're going to be considering. We give them, what, forty-five days' notice? If you start to change that ordinance through the process, then the question becomes, at what point do you have to send them another ordinance and say, wait a minute, we now added this and added this and added this?
Oh, right. I was just asking if this was an appropriate place for it or if it's, if it's even a part of the Planning Commission's jurisdiction to consider.
There are state laws banning certain rent control. Now, I realize that there was just recently some legislative action on lifting some of the prohibitions on inclusionary zoning. And I'm not sure what all the conditions are associated with that new legislation. But if you want to ask staff to bring back what your options are, yes, you can ask us to do that. Under the code, you can even initiate amendments, but that's not what we're, what has been advertised for this public hearing.
I have a couple of things. One is like, it, it seems like there are enough questions, there's enough things to discuss here. There's some what-ifs and, you know, even beyond where we are now, which is pretty far. But like, for example, the, the housing needs analysis and the building lands inventory, that would help inform what we're trying to go through here. It could address some of those ideas where somebody might want to build in an area and it could be taller because it wouldn't impact the view. I mean, we could sort out quite a few things, I would think, if we had enough information. And maybe if the, if we could, as Steve was suggesting, figure out what it is, what, what are we trying to hit here? I mean, because what we have is, is big and broad and wonderful, but we don't know what the, what we're trying to solve, what we're trying to.
The price points.
Help, yeah, just how many, how many housing type like X do we need? Where is the most appropriate place? Should it be closer to a school, let's say, or should it be closer to the hospital? I mean, we don't know where we're, we're kind of shooting in the dark here without enough information. And I just, although it would be a lot of trouble and a lot of time to kind of pull all these things together and if it does require a different ordinance, then maybe we ought to just.
Take a break?
Do it. I mean, maybe we ought to just consider all of the things that should be considered all at once or else we're going to have one thing after another, after another, after another. And that doesn't give really a clear vision of what this was all about, I think. And might be able to be another way to address some of the developers' concerns. Maybe there's ideas like the city lets, you know, says you don't have to pay taxes for five years if you can provide this, whatever it is. I mean, we don't know what it is, but there might be other.
Step on state law for that one.
Well, of course. I mean, there, there are, there are a lot of constraints for sure, but there are probably a lot of opportunities that we haven't, you know, that we maybe haven't uncovered and.
Let me interrupt to that, to Richard's point. The cost of the land, there's something we can do about the cost of the land up north. I'm sorry for the interruption.
We had talked about, and this, this sounds like, you know, Richard and I have talked about having some kind of a housing summit where we could address the. about having some kind of a housing summit where we could address a lot of different concerns and get a lot of general, you know, input about where people want to go. And I see that this would be part of our comprehensive plan effort. The economic opportunity and Housing Needs Analysis, the Buildable Lands Inventory also are part of the comprehensive plan that we'll be doing. So we will be having an opportunity through that process to have the conversations we need to have, and also end up with a map that is not necessarily the same as our zoning map, you know, maybe somewhat different, and reflect a longer view of the city.
And in talking about the comprehensive plan, and in the work that we're looking at tonight, you know, even the, right now, you're in the middle of the Parks, you know, the Parks Master Plan. And that too could dovetail into what we're talking about tonight, because one point that I also raise my eyebrows about is the reduced amount of recreation space for the larger buildings. It doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I understand it from a builder's point of view, obviously, but, but from living in the space point of view, you've got three kids, what are you going to do? Send them three blocks away? You can't see them. It just doesn't work for me. But if there was an adjacent park, there was a community asset, it could also feed into the idea of what we're trying to do tonight. So I kind of think we're kind of, we're almost, you know, we've got all these things that are almost good enough to glue together, but not quite. I just think we just needed the whole picture, and let's go for it, and we'll get to the affordable housing, because we'll know what that means. We don't know what it means. And we'll know where we can put the 45-foot story, story buildings, and we'll know what they can look like and where they can be, and we can address the parking per those types of sites. So I just think we're really, really close, but we just need, at least I would feel much better with more, more of all of that comprehensive look at it.
I have a few questions.
Thank you for that. That was good.
Yes. So have you only talked to the two builders who are currently building high-density multifamily dwellings?
Mm-hmm.
Have not talked to any other kind of high-density builders? The only ones-
There aren't, there aren't many, and we haven't had, we haven't had any new multifamily buildings recently, except those that Joe Barnes are doing at Orr Street and on East Devil's Lake Boulevard.
Is there a way that the city could talk to other people that aren't?
Well, I have-
It's like I'm going to go to the car dealership to say, hey, how great is this car? Of course, he's going to say, it's great.
Yeah. I am, I did tell another builder in town who's talking about doing some multifamily that I would send him this ordinance. I wanted to make sure we were kind of, you know, in the, at the point where I wanted to share it. And again, and also, the, our architect had suggested we talk to a builder. He does mostly single-family here in town, but I wanted to ask him about, he said he would be helpful in talking about the costs associated with some of these requirements. So, yeah, we can find other people to talk to, and maybe even go beyond the city of Lincoln City to find, to find a-
I would hope for that. How common do cities have bonuses like this? Is it, is it a standard that cities operate, hey, we're going to have these rules, but not really?
You know, I don't, other cities do have bonuses for various things. We have bonuses now in our Planned Unit Development Ordinance that increases density if the developer agrees to do certain things. We've used, I think it seems like we have another part of the code where we use a bonus system. The reason that I chose to do it here is because I heard developers asking for more density, and yet I felt that the city needed some design standards, you know, some minimal standards, at least. And so I thought this was a way to give them what they want and also get something in return.
Could we do like a bonus if they meet, let's just say, 80% of what you're proposing? Could they have a lower SDC thing if it's between four and 20-unit place, or 20 and 40-unit place have a, just a one-time fee for that? Instead of it being $120,000 because he's building 36 units, and each unit gets charged an SDC fee? Could it be that it's this many units or under, it's this one price?
The SDCs are based on what city staff think is the cost of providing the services that those people and those buildings need, like our sewer and water and our, and our streets and our-
They'll pay for monthly, right? They'll pay for that water and electricity monthly?
Well, that pays for the operation, but they, you know, some of the other bigger projects involved in providing water and sewer-
Pump upgrades.
Well, plants and, you know, the treatment plants and facility upgrades and that kind of thing. I don't know what's all involved, but I'm sure other people in the room, you know, probably could tell you, you know, if we wanted to go there this evening. But I think that that gets a little more complicated, frankly, but I get your point that maybe there's a way to incentivize affordable workforce housing, that the city could, could look into that and, and figure out if there isn't some way that we could provide some incentives or some subsidies.
Money-wise versus, because it says 1,200 square feet for the high density, right? Is the current standard?
Yes.
And you're proposing 960 square feet if they meet some bonuses?
Mm-hmm.
And then on top of that, if they meet more bonuses, they can build at even smaller units, correct?
I'm not, I'm not telling them what size of units to build.
I understand that, but the smallest that they can build-
Well, the night, the square footage has to do with the land area, not with the actual building, apartment unit. So we're talking about land area when we say 1,200 square feet, so-
Not the square footage of the apartment?
No, no, I should have clarified that, yeah.
That's a big difference.
Right. So they can build efficiencies, or they can build three bedrooms. They're still considered one unit from the code standpoint.
Okay, that's a big difference.
Yeah, it is.
Also, you say 15% for the, each story must be windows?
Windows, mm-hmm.
What is 15% windows? Can you have a picture brought back to us that shows what 15% of a storied building is?
Richard worked on, Richard came up with that number. Do you remember exactly why you landed on 15?
And just to see?
It is fairly minimal, I think, you know? In our, I can tell you that in our commercial design standards, in the Pearl Districts for frontage, the, you know, the front facades, they have to be 60%. In, in the string part, which is a lower standard, they have to be 40%.
Right.
So 15 is, you know, pretty modest.
Is Southeast Door 15%?
Pardon me?
Is the ones on Southeast Door 15%? If you're standing from the by my parking?
Well, there are two blank ends with no windows that are zero.
The ones that do have windows.
That I don't know. Do you happen to know?
I don't, I don't know.
I could calculate, I could figure that out.
And then also, you said something about the fences being wood. Do they have to be wood? Could it be just not chain link or something specifically? Does it have to be wood, or they use like a plastic alternative or something like that?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I don't know.
It's for the glare and for the noise, or what, the purpose of the fence?
Well, we were talking about buffer of 10 feet, and one of the developers said, you know, that's just adds more square footage that we don't have in our site, and so in some cases, it might be really tight, and it might be able to make the project, in fact, better if they could reduce that 10 feet down to four. But, and, so I thought, combined with some kind of a solid fence. I could say solid rather than wood. Yeah.
I was just thinking about the lights, you know, lights from the car lights and-
Right.
From the apartment lights and-
Something to block, something to block, especially the glare from the headlights, you know, it's, we really can't get a fence tall enough in some cases to, you know, block too many things. But we do have, in our lighting ordinance, we do require down-focused lights, so that's a good point, Riley.
Steve?
Yeah, I was just thinking, I think we need to do three things before we proceed with changing the multifamily ordinance. And one is to come up with an affordable, a definition of affordable housing that applies to this community, and we need to do the Housing Needs Analysis and the Buildable Lands Inventory. And I think once we do at least those three things, we can proceed at looking at changing the multifamily ordinance, but I think we should wait until then.
I was, I was waiting for-
Oh, no, I was just nodding in agreement, because, yeah, we are putting, Gary?
Yeah, I like, it was just added there, but what Deanna had said about the idea of the Parks Plan being done too, because if you had a park there and you put a 45-foot building with four stories in it next to the park, and all of a sudden, the park was a playground for the kids in the high-density 40, I mean, it could make everybody's life a lot better, and you could provide some parking there, kind of at the city's discretion. So I, I think all of these need to be, as you said, dovetailed, brought together. We got a lot of good, good work you've done, but, you know-
Well, and I appreciate your good comments this evening. I think it's a good conversation we're having, yes.
Great. Are there any more questions or discussion?
When you do your analysis, they have the building, buildable lands, the housing needs, can you throw, is there, is there something that's going to give us some kind of an income analysis of the local population?
Yes, I assume that'll be part of their Housing Needs Analysis.
Yes. That'll help us know what's affordable, if it is or isn't affordable?
We will, as I said, the consultants are supposed to get the proposals in by tomorrow. I already have two, and I think there will be quite a few more. We'll pick out who we think is going to be the best consultants for the job, and then we will develop a scope of work with the consultants and make sure that we have all those things in there that we need.
And one other, well, I'm still standing here, but when we, we get import, I mean, we're getting some RFQs or something like that for Cascadeheads Development?
Right.
Would those people be the kind of people you could ask about the question about what contractors would really look at and stuff?
We have.
Thank you.
The only other thing, oh, shoot, where'd it go? Oh, the other thing that would be helpful is, is too, with the buildable lands, and maybe this is something that you can find out, maybe it isn't, but just in different styles of houses, you know, I think you mentioned something about this before, about what are the class differences? Just didn't want you to forget about what, what these ideas, I think that the architect has drawn, so we have some idea of what we're, of what we're-
We're asking people to do, to build, mm-hmm.
Yeah, because we might be adding a thou, you know, $1,000, and we might be adding $50,000. We don't, I don't know, I'm not a builder.
I have one last thing. The proposed increase from 150 to 200 feet for the commercial zoning?
Yes.
What percentage of a property lot needs to be in that area to be considered commercial? Could 25% of the thing be in that? And then, oh, look, now we're over here, which is another 50 feet outside of the 200, because 10% of our building is in the 200 feet?
In 2014, and so it's, we're talking about increasing the distance from commercial, not increasing the commercial. Yeah, right, I mean, just to clarify. But, yes, so we're talking about, the high density is, is that area zoned multifamily that's within 150 feet of commercial, and we're saying, well, what if we made it 200?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, now I've forgotten what I was going to say.
The last time you-
Ask me the question again?
Okay, how much of the property-
Yes.
Is in the newly proposed extended fee?
I think Bruce knows the answer to this. In 2014, we figured out exactly how we would calculate that if part of it was in and part of it was out. So it's based on percentage that's in and percentage that's out, and so we calculate the area, the high-density area within the 150 or 200 separately. Then we calculate the part that's outside at the lower density that requires 2,000, 250 square feet instead of, you know, 1,200, and then we add those two together, basically. So we, and we know how much, we, we're treating it fairly, you know?
So one is valued at a different than the other?
Right, but we are not saying that the high, so we get a total number of units for the whole parcel. We don't, we don't then try to also say, well, this many have to be on this corner, and this many have to be on that corner, so, yeah.
All right, this would be the time for public comment. Kate, do we have anybody signed up to make public comment before I read this paragraph? Is there anybody out there that wants to make a public comment?
No one in the audience wants to make public comment.
Do we have additional comments from staff or?
The only real issue, I think, is do you want to continue this?
Yes.
And leave the record open and leave the hearing open, since it seems like you want to wait for additional material? Or do you want to simply re-advertise this when you feel it's ready to go forward?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good point.
We have to make a motion to that effect. Let's hear, Deborah, what would you like?
Well, I guess, Richard, if they would like to just not proceed with this at this point, and wait until we complete our Housing Needs Analysis by the end of the year, then would you suggest that we just close the public hearing and decide to re, just not approve the, the proposed ordinance, or recommend to not approve?
I believe the bylaws of the Planning Commission say something like, you, once you have an item, a legislative item, you have to act on it within, is it 60 days? And if you don't act, then it goes on to the city council with-
Without a recommendation.
Without a recommendation. And, you know, I think that doesn't mean that you can't continue a matter for good cause, but if you want to simply close the hearing, close the record, and recommend that this not be pursued and/or be re-advertised, then you could do that. The other option is you could simply continue it, and the council may be told by the Planning Department that you made a recommendation, and the council could suspend it. It's up to you.
Did you get all this?
If-
Okay, we can, we can hold it open, which means it'll sort of close by itself after our time expires. We can reject, or actually, we recommend it-
Recommend it.
To the city council-
To not approve.
To not approve this. And we can just close it. Do we have the options beyond just not approving it, or just not doing anything?
I, I just want to say, I, I thought it was in the bylaws. Kate's telling me she thinks it's in 1788. I do believe that that section says something less, unless agreed to by all the participants or something like that, so it's not exactly clear since this was the city initiated.
The city is the applicant, and we'd probably agree to do whatever you wanted.
If you continued it, you probably wouldn't have, have to send it on to the council without a recommendation, since you've, basically, the council is the applicant.
I'm getting a lot of head nods when you say you'd like to wait until the Housing Needs Analysis is complete. I think everybody's nodding their head. So if that's the case, Richard, and it's not going to be done until the end of the year and adopted, you know, file, in probably a year, it'll be, actually be adopted, do we, then should we just stop, recommend not going ahead with the process at this point?
Yeah, I think you would close the hearing, close the record, do a motion to that effect, go to deliberations, and your deliberation would essentially be recommend to the city council that they suspend work on this and re-advertise after the Housing Needs Analysis is complete.
I recommend we close the hearing on this item.
And the record.
And the record on this item. And, and put it, put it off the agenda until we have the items we've requested.
Maybe one, do, close the hearing and close the record first, and then-
Okay. I recommend we close the hearing and the record on this zoning code change for the RM code.
That was a, that was an emotion. That was a, that was a motion. What you actually said.
You moved, did you move to do that?
Moved to close the hearing and close the record.
Close the hearing on both the record and the hearing on the re-
Let's just move to close the hearing. The next process is close the hearing.
Close the hearing is, you can do them separately.
I'm doing both together.
Cause we did-
I did.
I wanted to, I wanted to ask a question, please. Why, why can't we just table the issue until, uh, next January of seventeen?
I think one reason, and this isn't a legal reason, but we have people who are kind of keeping an eye on the process and they may lose track of it. And I think it would be cleaner and it's, I think it will change, you know, over when we, when we bring it up again before we, uh, propose it again for adoption. Uh, I think it would be cleaner to close it, um, and then, and then have another notice when we're ready to go again.
I'm not disagreeing with that concept and that idea. I'm just wondering if there is another way to go. And the other way to go would be to table the issue to January of two seventeen, not two seventeen.
After you, well, you could leave the record open and you can leave the hearing open. And you can just make a motion to continue this matter to some date certain in January. But if you were to do that, I would recommend you instruct staff to re-notice and provide DLCD and whoever else with new notices. So, is that way the record that you've already created would be included in that continued here?
The only plus side to that is that it actually, this is an endpoint from when something should be done. So, you know, if we say we're gonna, we're gonna pick this up again in January-
You like the date certain part?
I like the date certain part because it's like dividends for the amendments. But, I, I'll go with whatever.
And, Your Honor, the other, the other, I like his option.
It, I think Deb's right. This is gonna be a brand-new issue by January of next year. Uh, we, when we've looked at the housing analysis, I'd really like to be moved forward on high-density, uh, housing before that, but, you know, that's where we are, so.
If you'd like, I could, I could take the ordinance, have a look at it and see if there's anything that we really think should be done right now as opposed to waiting. I, I'm, can't, nothing comes to mind, Richard. Do you have anything that, um, you would really like them to go forward with at this time that's in this ordinance?
No.
Okay, so you think it would all benefit from, from the additional information?
I think if, like, we're gonna make changes on the density and so on, we need to look at the quid pro quo if any. And so I think we need to, to look at it all at once rather than piecemeal.
So maybe to sum up your options, you could just continue the hearing and, and the rec, leave the record open, leave the hearing open, continue it till some date in January, date certain, and ask staff re-advertise. Or you could close the hearing, close the record and recommend to the city council that they abandon this particular amendment and re-advertise when the housing needs study is, uh, completed.
I motion that we close the hearing, close the record and at this time-
Just stop there.
I'm gonna stop right there.
Second. Kate, would you call a roll, please?
Hinton? Yes. Oakland?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, the hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
I would also like to recommend-
Well, we're in deliberation at this point.
Okay.
Do we wanna deliberate the-
I think we just tell at this point, we don't feel like we have anything that we wanna go forward to the city council with.
You're, you're in deliberations and, and your recommendation could, to the council could be to, uh, re-notice this, uh, after and re-initiate this, abandon this particular amendment and re-initiate it after the housing needs study is completed, or something to that.
Third, Gus. So, actually, Steve, between you and Deanna, could you come up with a motion? Cause I think you actually have four statements you wanna, you wanna put in the motion.
Recommend to the city council that they not approve this changes to the ordinance, right? And then, but that's one. What's the second one?
Until the housing-
Until the buildable, until the buildable housing-
Well, actually, actually, it's buildable lands, um, inventory and the housing needs analysis. And then we also would like-
And the definition of affordable housing.
That parks, um, that's just a master plan, so we can identify.
Do you have it, you have it?
You just did it.
So we would like to have the re- Go for it.
Go for it.
I would like to make a motion that to city council that we not approve the zoning, proposed zoning ordinance amendments until the following, um, the housing, the buildable housing, the buildable lands inventory. The, the housing-
Right.
The housing needs have been, analysis has been completed. The definition of affordable housing and the parks master plan has been completed.
And then the re-advertise.
Oh, and re-advertise once those have been completed.
Second.
That was fine.
Kate, would you call a roll, please?
Hinton? Yes. Griffiths?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Oakland?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right. Old business, non-scheduled, new business, non-scheduled. Reports and comments, Community Development Director?
Just wanted to tell you that, that at their last meeting, the, the council, uh, acted on the four, uh, items that, that, uh, you had, uh, made recommendations on and they, uh, they did not wanna change the definition of flashing signs, so they kept it at, at once, uh, once per hour. Um, on the power of the planning director to initiate zoning ordinance amendments, they, uh, uh, wanna go ahead with that. Uh, the same with the administrative adjustment on yard standards and, uh, ordinance, uh, that they, uh, voted to bring back would have the, uh, reduction, instead of twelve inches or fifteen percent, whichever is less, would be six inches or seven and a half percent, which is what you had recommended. And also they, uh, they wanna add the additional criterion that, uh, all reasonable alternatives must be exhausted before the, uh, the yard, uh, requirements can be reduced. Again, that was in accordance with your recommendation. You also had another recommendation that it appeals from, of, of the decision, uh, not have a fee in it. That is not an ordinance matter, but it's something that we'll bring back to them later in, in terms of, of setting fees. And the last was on the, uh, the, the walkways, uh, dedication of right-of-way, uh, changes to the public infrastructure improvement requirements. And, uh, that was one relating to the D River and another to the, uh, Head to Bay Trail. They, uh, wanted to go forward with the D River, not with the Head to Bay Trail one at this point. They may, they would consider it later, but not now.
They were, they were for putting the sidewalk on the riverside?
Yes.
Add the seventy-five percent, guys, good job. City Attorney? Planning Commissioners, reports and comments?
Question.
Shoot.
Here it is. Oh, I'll wait, never mind.
Uh, public comment on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing. Don't see any hands going up. Future agenda items and next meetings, our next meeting is Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, it's a regular meeting. It will be dealing with CPA and ZZ two thousand and sixteen dash oh-three, Oaks and Holt Asset Management, Logan Road, and PUD two thousand and sixteen oh-one, Amendment to Villages at Cascade Head, Disc Golf. You had a question, Indiana, before I-
I did, about the, um, just wanted some information or clar, or knowledge about what this, the first item is, the CPA and ZZ two thousand and sixteen dash oh-three. I don't know what that means.
You're asking what that's about?
Yeah.
On Logan Road just north of the, uh, is it Ashley? Liberty Inn. There's a small parcel, it's got a triplex on it, and the proposal is to rezone that from single-family to RC or GC, I can't remember which.
Recreation, commercial.
RC zone.
To the west of it?
North.
North. So as you're going up Logan, it's on the right-hand side, just past the hotel. Um, and, and it's just at the southwest corner of the, um, Logan Park, uh, planned unit development that we considered last year.
The area that was clear cut? Yes, the older house that's there.
So rezoned to what again?
Recreation, commercial.
That's not part of the city, is it?
Yes, it is.
That, that is, but the next part, the clear-cut part is not part of the city.
Yeah, it's just that, that very small parcel is there.
We'll get to hear it, uh, May seventeenth.
Same time, same station, right?
Yeah. All right, we're adjourned.